...driver, it rolls off.
Police say these screws and the steering wheel locks are deterrents but not a guarantee against crime.
We strive to have a community that is well-informed, so we have a campaign called "Lock It, Hide It, Keep It."
Lock it, a reminder to always lock your vehicle. Hide it, if you must leave valuables in the car, hide them from plain sight. Keep it, a positive reminder that personal responsibility can safeguard your valuables from theft.
Another tip from the LAPD is to place your steering wheel locks with wedge into the windshield, making it more difficult for potential burglars to take your car.
From the Hollenbeck Police Station in Boyle Heights, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
Residents need to provide proof of registration to obtain the locks and screws from the LAPD. For further information, you can contact Sergeant Min Nguyen, Officer in Charge of the Hollenbeck Community Relations, at 213-793-0747. Well, a playground is more than just a place for kids to play. In fact, in one inner city, a playground is one of the LAPD's most effective tools in fighting juvenile crime and delinquency. Anna Marcos explains.
You guys want to play?
Yes, sir!
Alright, let's go.
That is the sound of children marching off to have serious fun at their newly remodeled Alba Recreation Center in the Pueblo del Sol Housing Development. Newly-equipped computer classrooms, a multipurpose room, basketball court, and new playground are all part of the plan.
We could play around and we did play basketball and was right on the swings and we did do our homework and we did some stuff in here.
It looks like now everyone's having fun. It's great.
But there is a serious reason behind all the fun. The LAPD Newton Division's Police Athletic and Activities League, or PAL, has teamed up with the housing authority of the city of LA to offer mentorship programs and activities in a neighborhood where children have few positive options.
We're just grateful that we have officers who care about this community, who give their extra time, effort, and energy, and especially working with our youngsters to really make a difference in their lives.
The plan is to get more positive interaction between cops and kids.
We ran from tutoring, learning lab, art, Zumba, martial arts, boxing, running club. We go on various field trips a month, the beach, Nossberry Farm, Universal Studios, something that we kind of interact with the kids.
Newton PAL members work to prevent juvenile crime and delinquency here, and it looks like even the push of a swing is providing a powerful new weapon. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
New improvements at a popular walking path, a traffic alert for West Side commuters, and how to conserve energy during this heat wave. These stories and more in City Beat. Residents who frequent the Silver Lake Meadow will notice the addition of five new benches and three new bike racks. Councilmembers Mitch O'Farrell and Tom Labange, who represent the area, say a partnership between the city and the Silver Lake Reservoir Conservancy helped make the enhancements possible. Recently, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power also contributed to the beautification efforts by placing new benches on Tesla Avenue. The Silver Lake Meadow is located at Silver Lake Boulevard at the corner of Armstrong Avenue. Commuters who pass through Vista Del Mar and Playa del Rey are advised to expect traffic delays during construction of the Scattergood Olympic Transmission Cable Project on Vista Del Mar. The project, which will construct a 230 KV underground transmission cable, will improve power reliability in the communities of Playa del Rey, Westchester, Marina del Rey, and West Los Angeles. Construction will narrow Vista Del Mar to one lane with work continuing through March. The two-year project is scheduled for completion by the summer of 2015. The heat wave has the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power asking customers to conserve energy use where possible, especially between 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM. With recent temperatures exceeding 100 degrees in parts of the San Fernando and San Gabriel Valleys, the LEDWP says that can put increased pressure on electrical infrastructure, which can lead to outages. To help reduce energy use, LEDWP recommends adjusting thermostats to 78 degrees during the hottest hours of the day, limiting the use of appliances during those hours, and turning off lights and equipment when they are not in use. The city's new 13th District Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell has launched the revamped website, cd13.com, that aims to provide transparency in government and connect constituents with city resources. One new element on the website is a vote tracker that details how the councilmember voted on issues during each council session. In the "Speak Out" section of the website, constituents will be able to provide suggestions on improvements for their neighborhoods. Council District 13 includes the Silver Lake Echo Park and East Hollywood communities. Their playground's built for everyone, that means big and small, young and old, and for people with special needs. Another one of these custom-built parks has popped up in the valley, and as Gil Reyes reports, more are on the way.
All aboard this playground pirate ship. Children can embark on an afternoon of adventure with little risk of getting hurt.
What do you like about it?
That my whole family gets to just play over here.
And Rafael means everyone, including aging grandparents and relatives with special needs. That's because the new Degarmo Park Playground in Sun Valley is a universal access park. Its rubberized surface, custom-made slides, and swing sets, also easy-access ramps, all meet Americans with Disabilities Act guidelines.
We have an obligation as a city to serve every one of our inhabitants.
This is the fourth universal access playground to be built in Councilmember Paul Krikorian's district in the last three years. You'll find others in Valley Glen, Van Nuys, and North Hollywood. What do you think? Is it cool?
Yeah, it's really cool.
All that was here was just grass and dirt.
So this is much better.
Yeah.
Construction took seven months. It's a significant investment in the community.
We're happy to bring it to you.
The playgrounds are partly funded by the group Shane's Inspiration, which turned the death of a special-needs child into an international cause.
This mission is spreading throughout the world. This year alone, there will be playgrounds like this opening in Ecuador, and Israel, and in partnership with the Russian Olympics. There will be a playground like this for the children in Russia.
With universal access for kids of all ages. In Sun Valley, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Los Angeles has over 40 universal access playgrounds spread across the city. And in this week's list of things to do, the Autumn Moon Festival, a 5K that helps a good cause, and the LA County Fair. LA Chinatown will host the 75th Annual Mid-Autumn Moon Festival on Saturday, September 21st, from 5:00 PM to midnight. Held in Chinatown's Central and West Plazas, the festival will feature cultural workshops and performances, as well as live DJ sets by KCRW DJs, gourmet food trucks, craft beer garden, and even an Asian night market. Attendees will even get to view the autumn moon using state-of-the-art telescopes provided by Griffith Observatory. The festival is free for all ages at Chinatown's historic Central and West Plazas, located at 943 to 951 North Broadway Street and along Bamboo Lane. There is plenty of street and event parking, but the festival is also easily accessed via the Metro Gold Line. Go to Chinatown, LA for details. Homeboy Industries is dedicated to providing hope, job training, and support to formerly gang-involved and recently incarcerated men and women. And you can help support the organization on Saturday, September 21st, by joining in its 5K run at Los Angeles State Historic Park, located at 1245 North Spring Street Downtown. Registration and check-in will open at 6:00 AM, and the 5K will start promptly at 8:00 AM. Proceeds from the 5K provide jobs, training, and free services, such as tattoo removal, mental health services, case management, and legal services. Homegirl Cafe and Homeboy Bakery booths, as well as several other food vendors, will be there. Go to homeboyindustries.org. And the LA County Fair is taking place this year from Friday, August 30th, through Sunday, September 29th. There are more than 70 rides and 40 fun-filled games for the whole family. And of course, who can resist all that deep-fried, on-a-stick, battered, and breaded food? There's a petting zoo and even thoroughbred racing. Demi Lovato and Lynard Skinnerd will be taking the stage. The LA County Fair takes place at the Pomona Fairgrounds at 1101 West McKinley Avenue in Pomona. Go to lacountyfair.com for admission prices and other information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Our next story helps us see our local public transit system through new eyes, where one cultural gem after another is unveiled, one station at a time. Metro isn't just about getting from home to work and back home again. At least, that's not all it is. Metro recently hosted a free art tour at three of its downtown stations. The goal: to show that art isn't a destination, it's actually part of your everyday journey.
We're going to be looking at the Metro-commissioned artworks in the station. Metro has commissioned over 300 artists to create artworks that are in the stations of the metro, that people can enjoy during their commutes.
The free tours are led by Metro art docents and local artists. On this particular tour, docents lead participants from the 7th Street Metro Center Station to Union Station before ending at the Civic Center Grand Park Station.
It is an artwork. It's a functional artwork. It's meant to be used as chairs.
These granite benches by artist Christopher Sproat, called Union Chairs, put a contemporary spin on the old wooden leather seating in the historic Union Station above. At the 7th Street Station, the mezzanine level features a changing display of photographic transparencies installed in backlit boxes. The tour, of course, also emphasized how to navigate the metro system's rail and bus lines.
In Los Angeles, the traffic is very terrible. If people get to know more about this, you call that a train? Yeah. So maybe we'll let more people take the trains quite often. I think that's the main reason they do that.
Whatever the reason, the response for Metro's art tours has been positive.
July 4th, we had over 100 people participating in our tour. We've had approximately 20 to 30 people on each tour. This is the third one in, the last one of the summer series, and we'll start the fall series in October.
I love learning about LA because I live in LA and I work in LA, and so I consider this my neighborhood. So it's fantastic, always learning about things in my neighborhood.
So next time, before you get some shut-eye while riding the train or the bus, take a look around you. You may realize your commute is chock-full of cultural treasures. The Metro tours happen the first Thursday of the month. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind...
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my school...
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County...
Knowing when you need it most.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one day.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
2013, and I believe we have a quorum. Can we have a roll call, please?
Blumenfeld Bonn and Buzkano Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Queston, Timbers, President of Quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, shh. It's tradition that we start Tuesday with a flag salute. But before we do that, I think it's more appropriate today that we actually start this morning with a moment of silence for what happened in Washington DC at the Navy shooting, the Navy Yard. Twelve victims, eight wounded. Unfortunately, no military personnel, but there were still civilians and casualties. And our country is in mourning. I believe that if we haven't done so already, it would be appropriate that we ask the mayor to fly the city flag at half-staff as well. And with that, if we can please take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And with that, if we can ask Tom Labange to lead us in the flag salute.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, Mr. Labange, can I ask you, I've got a presentation. Can I ask you to take the chair for a moment, please? Thank you.
I'd like to call on President Pro Tem Mitchell Englander for a presentation of the 12th District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am joined today by my colleague, Mike Bonn, and as well as AT&amp;T, to launch a campaign that "It Can Wait." "It Can Wait" is going to, we're going to officially declare September 19th, which by the way, happens to also be my 20th wedding anniversary, so that's a good theme for my anniversary, "It Can Wait." I'm going to pay for that one at home. But this is the idea, is that we want to encourage everyone to take the pledge, starting not only with that day of September 19th, but each and every day, to know that "It Can Wait," that texting while driving kills people, period. AT&amp;T is taking and spearheading the effort of this, and we applaud AT&amp;T, and we're joined by Kevin Tamaki, our great friend with AT&amp;T. But let me give you some of the numbers. Sending text messages while driving means that 23 times, you're 23 times more likely to end up in a car accident. More than 98% of the people know that sending a text or an email while driving is not safe. So people already know it, but they're doing it anyway. Nearly 50% of people, 50% of the people that are driving are still texting and driving. Each year, over 1.5 million accidents involve a distracted driver. And much like drunk driving, texting takes an average of 4.6, 4.6 seconds on average off the road, your eyes off the road. Five years ago, colleagues, five years ago, September 12th, we had a horrific accident in my district. One of the worst accidents on US soil. 25 people died. 25 people died. We had mutual aid in response from fire companies and police departments all over the region. I was one of the first responders on the scene that day as well. We had hundreds of people injured from texting and driving. They weren't driving a car, they were driving a train. The Chatsworth-Metrolink train collision, which was five years ago, September 12th, was because of texting and driving. Texting and driving kills people. September 19th, we are launching the "It Can Wait" campaign with AT&amp;T. We need to spread the word. We need to share, particularly with young people, but with all people, that "It Can Wait," that you are taking lives, not just yours, but the ones around you, at risk in your own hands, and it's hard enough driving an automobile. It's hard enough with all the activity going around, and the traffic, and the issues, and pedestrians, and cyclists, and people that share the road. When you take your eyes off the road for those nearly five seconds, know that when you look up, there's a good chance, 1.5 million people told you that last year in accidents, that you're going to hit somebody. "It Can Wait." So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, another self-proclaimed techno-junkie, Mike Bonn.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. I want to thank Mr. Englander for bringing this forward today, and thank AT&amp;T for the public outreach and education campaign they're doing. You know, on the days that I take my automobile to work, I can look out the window and I can see people eating breakfast. I've seen people reading the newspaper. I've seen people applying makeup. I've seen people clipping their fingernails. And more and more, almost every single day, I can see people in the next lane or in front of me texting while they're driving, looking down constantly. And it is creating a huge hazard and a risk to our lives. This is like smoking. It's a habit. People become addicted to it. They know it is bad. They know it jeopardizes health, and they continue to do it. But the impact of texting and driving is actually much worse than the impact of second-hand smoke, because someone can die instantly on our freeways. About 10 years ago, I got my first BlackBerry, and a friend of mine who had had one for a few years gave me a piece of advice. He said, "The best thing you can do is put it in your trunk when you drive, because the temptation is going to be too great." It's advice I don't follow enough, and it's advice we probably all should follow. I'm not saying don't text or don't read your emails while you're on your way to work, just go Metro.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you, Councilmember Labange and honorable councilmembers. Good morning. I'm Kevin Tamaki with AT&amp;T. I want to thank you and the entire council for joining the movement. I especially want to extend my appreciation to Councilmembers Englander and Bonn for taking the lead and presenting today's...
for taking the lead and presenting today's resolution. "It Can Wait" started as an education campaign by AT&amp;T to raise awareness about the dangers of texting while driving. It has now grown to include T-Mobile, Sprint, Verizon, and over 200 other organizations, that this issue is bigger than just one company. And we believe the power of many voices will help us end texting and driving. This summer, we joined forces with our other wireless partners to fund a new ad campaign focused on getting everyone to recognize that texting while driving is just as dangerous as drinking and driving. The summer campaign will culminate in a nationwide pledge on September 19th, where cities, community organizations, and the private sector will join together to urge everyone to take the pledge never to text and drive. The bottom line is that texting and driving can be fatal, but far too many of us ignore that risk. Texting while driving is involved in over 100,000 vehicle crashes every year, often causing injuries and death. Studies show that teens not the only culprits here. 90% of adults admit to texting while driving, knowing the risk. So it's up to all of us to improve those statistics. On behalf of AT&amp;T, I want to thank the entire L.A. City Council and the city family for stepping up and joining us in raising awareness and driving more people to take the pledge not to text and drive. Go to www.itcanwait.com and take the pledge. Why? Because it can wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much and all of AT&amp;T, Mr. Englander.
Yes, thank you very much. We also ask that you don't take that pledge while driving. And whatever you're driving. It's, you know, as you know, I also ride a motorcycle. And I'm seeing more and more bikes out there, motorcycles, with a phone device, their cellular phone on their handlebars. And I actually see bikes, motorcycles, if you can imagine, riding with one hand and texting while driving. We've seen what happens with train accidents. We're also seeing a growing problem of pedestrians crossing the street, particularly around universities. And we've seen a lot of accidents around CSUN, where they step off the curb and walk right out into traffic because they're texting while they're walking. We've got to be aware. Technology is around us. It's changing us. We know the statistics. We know the numbers. It's not a matter of if you get in an accident, now it's when. And so we ask that everybody join the pledge. We also ask that all of the council members, if they could, put this pledge in a link on their newsletter to ask their communities to take the pledge as well. We've had Crazy Sock Day, and it went over well. And we've been able to raise well over 15,000 pairs of socks for those who can't afford them, and the homeless. Imagine how many lives we can also save if we get together to share this and spread the word about safety and texting and what it means in our own community. So thank you very much, colleagues. We really appreciate it. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we present this resolution to AT&amp;T, to Kevin Tamaki, saying that, "Take the pledge. It can wait."
Thank you, Mr. Englander, Mr. Bonn, and Kevin. Thank you very much, Kevin. And, Mr. Englander, you made a great point about people texting and using their phones in a crosswalk intersection. So it's very important, both for drivers but those people walking, as pedestrians. As Mr. Englander will tell you from his police experience, texting when you're walking through a sidewalk in a roadway is a dangerous thing as well. So awareness is key. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce the great Councilman of the 13th District, the former Chief Field Deputy, but now the fine Councilman, Mitchell O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's always a pleasure to be introduced by you. I also want to thank my fellow colleagues on the City Council for joining me in celebration of Life Insurance Awareness Month. It's important to raise the awareness about taking care of your financial house. For nine, for the last eight years, former, my predecessor and former City Councilmember, Eric Garcetti, now our mayor, raised awareness about life insurance. I feel it's important to carry on this tradition for a few reasons. As we continue to emerge from the Great Recession and begin to once again have the resources to plan ahead for our future, we need to think about having financial peace of mind. Life insurance is peace of mind. When you die, your spouse, your family, or your business partner are left with your debt or mortgage payment. If you're single and have no family, those you leave behind might be shouldered with the burden of your departure. Life insurance is important. It's about taking care of life and what you leave behind. I want to recognize some people who are standing with me today. First, Tom Michael. He is the state representative, I'm sorry, President of the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. Also, Mr. William Patterson, President of the Los Angeles Chapter of the National Association of Insurance. Also, Mr. Gilbert Maris, Ben Aranda, along with Tom Michael, Kim Michael. All are past Presidents National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors. They're all past Presidents. Also joining us, we have Lana Monrealo, Michael Maris, Sean Coughlin, Paul Sitar, Kelly Curtis, Adam, and Adam Barr. My council colleagues, by adoption of this resolution today, we officially declare this day as Life Insurance Day and as September as Life Insurance Awareness Month in the City of Los Angeles. On behalf of my colleagues, I want to congratulate the National Association of Insurance and Financial Advisors on their important work of helping families seek a financially secure future for their loved ones. And now to just say a few quick words, I'd like Mr. Tom Michael and Mr. William Patterson to step up to the microphone.
Thank you again very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell. Thank you, council, for again allowing us this opportunity. As Mr. O'Farrell said, this is the eighth time we have had the distinct pleasure of addressing you in this highly esteemed chamber. Our message is simple and clear. The need for life insurance is critical for all to consider. The good news, over 75 million families own insurance. Over $19 trillion of life insurance is in place right now. But the bad news is 95 million adults don't have life insurance. Only 44% of U.S. households have individual life insurance. This is at a 50-year low. And 58 million households say they need more life insurance, the highest level ever. There are 11 million families with children under 18 that have no life insurance coverage. Seven in 10 households in this same category would be in jeopardy if the primary breadwinner died. Fewer consumers are purchasing life insurance. Approximately 1 million fewer policies are owned and sold than in 2004. Buying life insurance has a low priority, yet in seven out of 10 households, they agree that it is a sound financial tool. I think the message is clear, and that is why our industry comes together every September to alert consumers to evaluate their life insurance program. This year, our national spokesman is Boomer Asaiason, who lost his mom when he was seven. He personally tells his story at lifehappens.org on the struggles that faced his family because there was no life insurance on his mother. Consequently, one of the first things Mr. Asaiason did when signing an NFL contract was purchase life insurance. Today, the insurance industry averages a payout of $1.5 billion a day, only surpassed by Social Security at approximately $1.7 billion a day. 20 cents of every dollar currently saved for retirement is in an insurance-based product. Let's face it, life insurance is not for the people who die. It's for the people who live. It is one of the most selfless gifts one can do for those they love. So we thank you again for helping us get our message out. We encourage everyone to have a life insurance checkup. And for further information, please go to lifehappens.org. Because guess what? Life happens. Thank you.
Great, now, thank you.
We're good. I think there's a takeaway this morning. Take the pledge not to text and get some life insurance. So I want to thank you so much.
And maybe not in that order? Get the insurance first, and then pledge not to?
You want to take care of both concurrently?
Both, yes. Just don't text and your life insurance.
All right. I'd like to present this certificate to this wonderful organization. Please step forward.
You got it. We're going to take some pictures there. Thank you. Great, thank you very much. And before we call up the next presentation, we'll go ahead and approval of the minutes. We'll take care of some business as well. So Councilmember Fuentes moves. Councilmember Weezer, second. Next item?
Committee resolutions for approval.
Okay, Councilmember Bonn moves. Councilmember Busciano, second. The next item, please.
Mr. President, there is request to continue items 1, B, and E to October 1st.
Okay, that'll be the order, without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing.
Okay, those are, do we have cards on those?
Cards on items 1 and 2.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold items 1 and 2, and we'll go ahead and take item 3. If we can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, where does that take us?
Items 4 through 34 are items which public hearings have been held.
4 through 34, members, do we have any specials?
Eight, 18.
21 for Mr. Labange.
18, please.
18 for Mr. Busciano. 22 for Mr. Price. Mr. Weezer?
34. And also number 13 for Mr. Parks.
Weezer, 34. Number 13 for Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, items 7 and 8, there was not a quorum in committee, so public hearing should be held for items 7 and 8.
And do we have cards on 7 or 8?
Not at the moment.
No cards. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take those items. No other specials? Okay, seeing no other specials, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Madam Clerk? Where does that take us?
Items 35 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those. Close the roll for consideration. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take those items now. Do we have public comment cards on those?
Cards on items 35, 37, 40, and 45.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll go ahead and take all of those other items. We don't have cards on if there are any specials from any members.
And, Mr. President, items 48 through 50 are closed session items. You wish to hold those items?
Yes, we will. With the balance of those, seeing no other specials, no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much.
On the supplemental agenda, items 51 through 60 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, 51 through 60. We'll go ahead and have 10 votes for consideration. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, and do we have any specials, members, from items 51 through 60? I'm going to go ahead and call item 51 special per me.
And, Mr. President, there's cards on items 59, 60, and 51.
51, I'm sorry.
There are cards on items 51, 59, and 60.
We'll go ahead and hold all of those items with the balance of those, if we could. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Labange?
So there's a lot of great messages. And thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Texting, life insurance, and this is a very special day. It's methyllethioma. Say that correctly for me, Hannah.
Mesothelioma.
Awareness Day. Awareness Day, which is so important as we get into this presentation. Hannah Mintz is joined by many of her friends and others who are here today. It's an aggressive asbestos-related cancer that affects the linies of lung, abdomen, the heart, and testicles. And the heavy use of asbestos in manufacturing and industry and construction has been recognized as the worst occupational health disaster in our U.S. history. Asbestos was used in the construction in virtually all office buildings and public schools before 1975. A high percentage of this is exposed to at our naval ships and our shipyards, Mr. Busciano, as you well know. Through this here, we believe, including many firefighters, police officers, rescue workers from ground zero of the tragic day of 9/11, were exposed. Exposure for as little as one mouthful could create a substance that raises its ugly head 30 years later. Because of the naval service-related households or even incidental exposure, a very long-lasting disease, tens of million Americans, including hundreds of Angelenos, are now at risk of developing this disease. It's important that we establish this day for methyllethiomas. You've got to say it correctly because I've got a bad tongue. You've got to help me, Hannah.
Mesothelioma.
Methothelioma Awareness Day, this day in Los Angeles, for the county and city of Los Angeles, for all to know that we, on behalf of the mayor and everyone, recognize this day to raise public awareness. But this is a proclamation. But this is a real person, an Angelino who's been affected by it, lost her son.
Right.
So tragically. Hannah Mintz, please continue with this very important message.
Thank you. And thank you all for giving me your attention just for a very short moment. I appreciate it. Tom, thank you for making sure that this happened and to your staff as well. Mesothelioma is caused by asbestos. All those ads you see on late-night television have nothing to do with the disease. Those ads that you see on late-night television are put there by lawyers and marketing companies trying to bring in patients because it's a very lucrative business. In addition to mesothelioma being a lucrative business, it is a colossal tragedy that has affected every single person standing with me here right now. Your attention will be appreciated.
If I can ask all members and all the conversations on the side of the chambers and in the back of the room, please, this is very important, please, if I can ask everybody to keep your conversations either to a whisper or take them outside. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. But mesothelioma, which is caused by asbestos, is the biggest health tragedy we have in the United States because it is underreported. Asbestos, you say? Is it not banned? It is banned worldwide. There are few countries that still consider it a useful mineral for construction purposes. Russia, Egypt, India, our neighbor to the North Canada, and, yes, the United States. We do still use asbestos in the United States. Most victims of asbestos exposure who develop mesothelioma were in the armed forces, predominantly in the U.S. Navy, where they worked in boiler rooms with insulation. Construction workers are disproportionately affected. Plumbers, for example. But there are a huge number of exceptions. There are people who never worked with the stuff, never thought they were in contact with the stuff, and developed this horrible illness. Right here, Dawn and Betty Bendix. Dawn is a member of the Board of Directors of the Mesothelioma Applied Research Foundation, which I chair. They lost their son Kenny, who was about 46 years old, to mesothelioma. Marina, my daughter, who's here, and I lost our brother and son, Adam, to mesothelioma when he was 33. The irony is that he attended L.A. public schools, and his high school, Chatsworth High School, was closed down for asbestos remediation the same day that High School, was closed down for asbestos remediation the same day that he went in for debulking surgery at Kaiser in Woodland Hills. The school still stands, and students still go there. Cam Dever, behind us here, a young man and his wife, Chrisha. Cam is a patient, Cam has mesothelioma. He is the face of mesothelioma. It is not just old men in their 70s and 80s who were exposed in their youth. The latency period for this disease is 10 to 50 years. And here is Cam, who has this disease in him and who is fighting it. Nick Carno, who's many of you know, lost an uncle to mesothelioma. He was in the construction business. That's how he was exposed. Michelle Silver and Maybelline Rucka have lost their friend Adam to mesothelioma. These are not the old people that you think about. These are young people. Wives are exposed when the husbands come home with asbestos on their clothes. They shake them out, they put them in the laundry, and the fibers drift all over the place. Children hop up into daddy's lap when he comes home from work, and they inhale the fibers off his clothes. What's the answer? We appreciate your proclamation of Mesothelioma Awareness Day. I appreciate that so many of you are listening so attentively, because this may have affected you, or it may affect you in the future. Please heed what I'm saying. There are only two ways that we can eliminate this disease. The first thing we need to do is to ban asbestos, the use of asbestos anywhere in the United States, but that's a larger issue. The second issue is to fund research. The foundation which I chair does only that. We fund peer-reviewed research. If we can wipe out AIDS in 40 years, and I would imagine everyone who's here has either been affected by AIDS personally, they know of somebody with AIDS, know that 40 years ago it was a death sentence. Today, it's a chronic illness, and there's even a cure, as was shown in a young patient not too long ago, who received aggressive treatment very early in life. The people standing here with me would wish for nothing more than for mesothelioma to become a chronic illness, and that can only happen with your help and support. I do hope that when such issues come before you, or if you know of issues coming before the legislature of California, that you will help support them, also those before the United States. I want to thank you very much. This has been a very difficult thing to do. It's very cathartic to be able to talk about it before an audience such as this, and know that you have the power to make those decisions on some level, and I urge you to please do that. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. If we can give her a round of applause as well. Thank you very, very much. Critical information, in fact, Chatsworth High School's in my district, so, and, Mr. Labonge, thanks for bringing it forward.
And Ms. Mintz, we're gonna circulate more information. Thank you, and, yeah, let's give them a hand as we celebrate methyllethiomas Day today.
Oh, Tom.
Well said, well spoken.
Mesothelioma Day.
Mesothelioma Day. I got a mouthful there, but it's so important, and someone out there listening on Channel 5 will react to it today, and will save a life from this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, members.
Mesothelioma, don't try to even text that while you're sitting. And now, with that, Mr. Huizar, I believe you have a presentation? Did you have a presentation? No. Oh, Mr. Sadio actually has a presentation. Is Mr. Sadio ready?
No.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and come back, and we'll take, we'll go ahead and go back to the agenda. Madam Clerk? Okay, we're gonna go ahead, and Mr. Walsh, if you want to come on up, you've got several cards you can speak on. And let me just run through them, and I'll run through them before your clock starts. We'll go a little slower, so you can write it all down and know exactly where you're at, okay? All right, John. So we're gonna start with item 2, and then item 37. I'll make sure you get that. Item 40, 45, 51, and 59. Okay, it's all yours.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, go to J. Walsh Confidential. First of all, item 2 again. We have to put a cap on alcohol licenses. We have reached the limit, and I just want everyone to know that you, and your children, and your mothers, and your fathers are potential victims of hit-and-run drivers, that you gave a license to 15 to nothing on the grounds that it was convenience and necessity, necessity. I know no one gives a damn about this issue, and every time I see someone dead in the street, I read about it, I think of your here, what you do here, and it is despicable. There has to be a reason we lead America in per-square-mile of liquor licenses and in drunk driving, hit-and-run. It's a fact. And they're gonna sit there, now, whenever I say something wrong, they shove it right down my throat. You've seen it, they interrupt me, but they're all sitting there, you know, look, these liquor licenses, they're going to major corporations that put money in their pocket, blood money, blood money. You don't believe me? If people don't believe me, just don't go to my website. Now, 37 is, again, reap, 100% in favor of it. Number 40, this concerns, I cannot believe this, you want retired peace corps, this is federal legislation you're backing, retired peace officers in America to have the right to carry concealed weapons, the entire United States? Look, we just had an officer, an army, an army man, with his concealed weapon kill 13 people. You want every fascist in America, every fascist peace officer in America to have, and you to carry concealed weapons? And these are the phony liberals, everybody. They're not gonna say anything, because they've been told. Now, just read it, number 40, endorsement concealed carry weapon permit if the retiree carried a firearm in the course of their duties. Okay. This will add millions of people, millions of psychotics. They don't care, they've gotten their orders. Does this make sense to you? Does this make sense to anybody? You know, see, most people don't even read these agendas, and, or go in, okay, number 45, this concerns another BID, Business Improvement District. I was against them. Then, at the corner of Yucca and Argyle, we had a building full of absolute psychotic, it was out of control with drug dealers. I went to the LAPD, Captain Gramala said, "Oh, we're doing the best we can." Then I went to the BID, the Hollywood BID, and a retired cop said, "We'll take care of it." He went to Gramala, and they boarded up and got rid of all of them in one day. Bee couldn't do anything. Yeah, take a look at Bee now. Okay, she got kicked upstairs. Read my, why she's not a captain, read it in our website, read it right now on our website. Number 51 is, this concerns the special election. We want to keep the Health Department where it is. We don't need any elections. And 59, and make sure you don't lose my cards. Okay, this concerns, they're trying to get out of their liability for sports injuries that happen on their playing fields. That's what they're doing here. And finally, number 60, this concerns a cost, they want to create a new city planning department. When they can't do it, when they're out of, when everything's out of control, create a new department. That's the name of the game. You will see things on there that will shock you, and we will be doing, stay tuned, because the real, the real heavy shit is coming up next.
He's not talking about this group of items. He's not talking about this group of items.
I can use the word shit. Heavy shit is a phrase, like piss stall.
He is not talking about these items that are on the agenda. Okay, apparently, he's done. So, okay, with all of those items, thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead and vote on these items. We have no other speaker cards for any of these items, except for item 51. We're gonna hold that, however, we'll close public comment on 51, since there are no, there are no other cards on 51. And with, open the roll on items, let me just read them off, 2, 37, 40, 45, and 59. Open the roll. We'll close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And where does that take us? Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item 1, call special for cards.
Okay, item 1, we have two, we have four cards on items 1. Mr. Gonzalez, or is it Mrs., it's, I'm sorry, Jasmine Gonzalez, I apologize for that.
Oh. Do you want to do an introduction?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez, you'd have an introduction. I believe you have some special guests here that are joining us.
Good morning, colleagues. I'd like us to welcome Morning Star Academy from Van Nuys. Can you please stand up? Thank you, welcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and turn to items 1 now. Jasmine Gonzalez, are you here? Okay, no longer here. Sheila Burke. Please, if you're here, approach the podium. Speak to item 1 if you would. Sheila Burke is gonna be followed by, oh, go ahead and Sheila, we'll figure it out in
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Go ahead and start anytime you're ready. The clock's already started, so.
Um, well, I don't know exactly what I'm supposed to tell you, but there is nothing really wrong with this property, and when the guy came out, there was a man came out.
If you could, I apologize, can you just state your name for the record once again, and perhaps the property you're in question?
My name is Sheila Burke, and I have 438 14th Street in San Pedro, California, 90731. And I object to some of the comments from here, because the cars that they're referring to are running cars that drove in and out every time people went to work. And the yard is tidy, and it never was untidy. I mean, apart from trimming trees and stuff like that, which you do on a regular basis, like a gardener would do. And I have photos of the yard from this morning, and back when this was issued, the man came out and he gave us some time to fix it, and then when he came back out, he said that he wasn't gonna find us at all. And that was like a long time ago. And I don't understand at all why I'm being given this notice or being brought in here. I don't even know what this is here. I assume it's some kind of court, but I've been standing at the back, nobody explained it to me.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
I don't want to have a lean put on my house, because there's nothing...
Thank you very much, we'll go ahead and put that on the record. Great, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we've got a couple other cards here as well. Jasmine was not here?
I'm here.
Oh, Jasmine, okay, come on up. You're on 1E.
I have pictures of them.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jasmine Gonzalez, I'm Salvador Gonzalez Elias's daughter. I live in this property at this time. I object to some information that's in the, from the inspector, there was never plumbing. I have images. I brought the 15 copies that were told to be brought. Everything that was in the property before we bought it with the closing escrow. It was 1993, and the property had the addition to the garage, and also the electricity wires that went from the house to the garage. We never put any additions to it. I have images of when we bought the house with the closing escrow, so, but I was informed that now that if I'm the property owner, that I have to pay for the existing things. So I don't mind demolishing anything, I just need time. Electricity was already taken off, and I'm just trying to have, I believe, he's a constructor to demolish the portion of the existing garage. But the plumbing, plumbing was never done. They dig through the edges of the garage, and plumbing was never done, and it states that plumbing was in the property, but it wasn't there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and note that for the record as well. Yes?
What item were you speaking to?
1E.
1E?
1E. It's 138 East 102nd Street, Los Angeles, California, 9003.
Do you have any other questions on this, Ms. Walsh?
No, that's in CDA, I just want to point that out, if someone from CDA could probably speak with her.
Okay, and if you want to contact them as well directly, feel free. Okay, thank you very much, and we have one final speaker card. Juan Nakala. And you're, Juan, you've also got a speaker card on 36, so if you want to go ahead and take both of those together, we have no other cards on item 36, you're the only individual on 36. We'll end up taking members, items 1 and 36, next, for a vote.
I don't want, once again, relates to liens on people's property that come begging to you, "Please don't leave me homeless." We live in a homeless-making system. How do you expect these people to come up with all this money, just because you fictitiously made up excuses to take their money? And what is the threat? You're going to lose your house. So you use housing as a way to enslave the people, and it is not fair. We need to change the system to a system where nobody goes homeless for any reason. I've been telling you that since day one, and I will come and call you a piece of crap and everything else, and I'll tell you...
If you could speak to the item specifically, if you could speak to those two items, please.
Specifically, you are screwing up the people.
Okay, thank you very much. You'll be disrupting the media if you're not gonna, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Please, you know what? Time is up, you've walked away, so thank you very much. And, you know, if we could please have some decorum, and don't shout at other, the speakers, if you're in the pew, if you're gonna shout at the other speakers in the queue while you're sitting in chambers, we'll dismiss you from the chamber, so thank you very much. So with those items, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those two items. Madam Clerk, you ready? We're good? Okay, and close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, where does that take us?
Item 13, called special by Councilmember Parks, Mr. Huizar...
Mr. Huizar, did you wish to speak on 13 on behalf of Parks? I know the item has already been satisfied for public comment.
Yes, I was calling that special for Councilmember Parks, and we might want to hold that on the desk until a little bit later when he arrives. Would you just let go through?
Do we know, do you know if he's scheduled to arrive?
Hold that on the desk for now, please.
Absolutely, not a problem. We'll go ahead and hold that for Mr. Huizar, for Mr. Parks. We'll go ahead and hold that for Mr. Huizar, for Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk?
Item eighteen called special by Councilmember Busciano.
Okay, Mr. Busciano, item eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, several months ago, in Public Safety Committee, we heard from the Los Angeles Police Department, where we stand as a city when it comes to hit-and-run crimes. During the robust discussion, we went over the details of the nature and frequency of these crimes, the challenges we as a city face in curtailing this behavior, as well as suggested remedies to help address a substantial quality-of-life issue for our residents. In our discussion, several recommendations were presented to potentially solve and prevent more of these crimes. These include making hit-and-run crimes a part of CompStat, automatic license revocations, and the holding or forfeiture of offending vehicles, allowing prior hit-and-run convictions to count on the same level as DUI offenses, and limiting civil compromise for hit-and-runs, and extending the existing statute of limitation for all fatal and severe injury-hit-and-run collisions. We definitely have a problem in our hands, colleagues, as the statistics in the report indicated. However, we're not, we don't have a chance to try to improve the situation and solve more of these crimes. Thanks to the efforts of Council Assemblymember Mike Gatto, the statute of limitations will now be increased to six years from the date of the crime. We understand that accidents happen, but if you run from a scene of an accident, you are a coward. You are committing a crime. And by adopting the recommendations of this report, we can get the necessary resources on board to solve more of these crimes, and help put a dent in this major quality-of-life issue facing our residents. And I'm tired of having us approve a number of rewards for hit-and-run crimes here in this city council. We have before us Los Angeles Police Department Commander, Captain, thank you so much for being here.
Good morning.
You can give your report, and then we'll take this to a vote.
Certainly. Good morning, council members and community members. Mike Williams, representing the Police Department, along with Captain Phil Fontanetta. The first thing I'd like to say is the Police Department recognizes the seriousness of this issue that's been plaguing us for a number of years. And I will tell you that we have been focused on this issue over the last two years for certain, and have been placed in a position where we have asked for additional legislation to address the legal portion of this crisis. It is a lot easier, unfortunately, for an individual, for example, that's DUI, to flee the scene. There are fewer consequences for that individual than it would be for him to stay, because the penalties for DUI are more severe than they are for hit-and-run. And we've asked that the law be amended to make it more severe, if not as severe of a penalty for hit-and-run. We, like Councilmember Busciano, are getting tired of seeing on the news or going to scenes where we see children and men and women in the community killed or severely injured. It is truly a crisis. Our year-to-date hit-and-run numbers are up three percent of 1213. From 1113, they're up five percent. And we're talking about about 14,000 incidents year-to-date for this year. That's unacceptable. What we've done is we've focused on hit-and-run. In two weeks, we will be bringing each and every, on a weekly basis, each and every accident investigation follow-up detective and his or her supervisor into the traffic, Department Traffic Coordinator's office, where they will be asked to give us an update on the status of those cases. And at that point in time, we'll be able to determine what additional resources or help they need from the department at large to help resolve some of those issues. We've also done some outreach to the community, particularly the senior citizen community. We've identified the seventeen largest senior citizen centers within the city, and we're educating those individuals. I might add that in looking at these statistics, we have no spike in traffic collisions, hit-and-run collisions, in those areas. But we still recognize that that's an important segment of the community that we need to address.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much. And if you want to push your, we've got a couple other members on the queue as well, but feel free to speak again. Mr. Labonge, you're up.
First of all, Mr. President, members, Commander Williams, one of the great commanders of the Los Angeles Police Department, thank you for your work. Captain, good to see you as well. I am, as all of us, is concerned on this issue, but statistically, if you go back 20, 30 years, are hit-and-runs significantly higher? Or have you looked back in the data?
We haven't gone back that far.
Okay, if you could look back in the data, because I think it would be important to understand. In 1990, I went over to robbery homicide to find out how many people, because we had a rage over, almost 2,000 people were killed in Los Angeles. And I went over, and Leroy Orozco was the old detective for robbery homicide. He took out a book, Mike Bonin, like a registered old hotel, and all the names he got up in 1960, 220, where we had, well into the thousands in 1990. Statistics are important for us to know, to see what is happening. So I would just ask, as you, on the future, and also Detective Sergeant Eto'o, who I think is here, give us those statistics so we could know how this change has affected in people, in their behavior, you know? Because there's a way we have to try to deal with this. Nothing's more shocking. And often, when we're here with someone who's of a tragedy and occurrence, they just want closure. And when the tragedy happened and not knowing who caused the tragedy, they ran from the tragedy, brings a deeper sorrow to their soul. So I just wanted to thank you. And if we could look back, you know, even 50 years, just to see as a guidepost as we go on, statistics are important. And Mr. Bonin, I know you're complimented often by your technology interests. I think it's very important to do that. Even now, in professional sports, they use statistics more than anything else to try to determine factors that happen. So I think that would be important. Thank you so much.
Certainly will, thank you. We'll take a look at those.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sadio.
Just to further develop that point, Mr. Busciano was bringing this to my attention, that the new law, just passed last Friday, soon to be signed by the governor, will restore the driving responsibility, the license responsibility, to immigrant motorists. For 60 years, we had the safest highways in America. We changed that in 1993, and our highways have declined since then. No doubt, given the collision between our immigration policy, or lack thereof, and our highway policy, that the rise and increase in hit-and-runs should be related. If you look back 20 years, I think, Mr. Labonge, that's probably a good measuring stick, when the policies changed, to see the impact of both those policies on this. For many, a mere fender bender is a commitment to deportation, if they stick around. And so, we've heard this a lot over the last 16 years, at least I have. And I think we should look at the nexus or the connection between those two. A lack of an immigration policy, and then a lack of a licensing responsibility for immigrant motorists. In this city where people come from throughout the world, where they have different customs and practices, it's very important that we, as we anticipate the signature of the governor, implement and execute this law as soon as possible, to make sure all motorists know their responsibilities in these matters.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And while I'm current president presiding over this matter, I'm also chair of Public Safety. We've heard this issue as well, and I really appreciate you bringing this forward and gathering statistics. I think the most important thing is this, that we're actually tracking. You can't fix what you can't track.
Right.
We're actually tracking this now as part of CompStat as well.
Right.
And as well, the most important thing is that we're no longer, as a city family, calling these accidents. And we made that commitment in Public Safety. We reiterate that today. The second you leave an accident and you flee, it's now a crime, and it's not an accident. So we don't have a single hit-and-run accident in the city of Los Angeles. We have too many hit-and-run crimes. So appreciate you bringing this forward, and Mr. Busciano as well. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this item. Mr. Price, point of clarification? Absolutely, you're up. Before we, we'll keep the roll open, but we'll have you speak anyway.
Thank you, I apologize.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Price.
Thank you. I just want to certainly stand in support of this motion. Appreciate the officers, your work, and Councilman Busciano. You know, this is really a public health issue.
Yes, it is.
These hit-and-run accidents. We had one in my district this weekend. Young man going home from church on Friday evening, right there on 42nd and Normandy.
I'm familiar with that.
And just heartbreaking when you see the impact and the results. Even more troubling, when neighbors reported that they had complained about this intersection, about the need for flashing lights or a stop sign, something to slow the traffic down there. So still no excuse, though, for someone to leave the scene of the crime, as was done in this case and in others. So again, I just stand in support of it, but your thoughts on how we can certainly work together and more collaboratively with the Department of Transportation, making sure that the signage is appropriate to provide the kinds of warnings that are helpful in preventing these kinds of accidents.
Thank you. Council members, please understand, we keep talking about statistics. This isn't about statistics and numbers as much as it is about, from our department, about human lives and people that are impacted. So the numbers are important, but what's more important is how we impact the community and their well-being.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Where does that take us? Why don't we go ahead and take item 13? Item 13 was called special by Mr. Huizar on behalf of Mr. Parks. We've already actually had public comment on this, and satisfied public comment and committee. Mr. Parks put in a request that we actually have public comment, again, even though it's not required. But we're going to go ahead and honor that, and we're going to have one minute, though we do have several cards. So we'll have one minute from each speaker, so we can get their comments on the record. So if we could, one minute on the clock for each speaker. First, Jim Childs, followed by, and if you can line up in this order, please, Jean Frost, Rob Glushon, Laura Myers.
Before they start speaking, Mr. President, this is a reminder that this is a fair hearing matter, requiring heightened attention to the speakers at the podium or to your monitors at your desks.
Yes, it says a fair hearing matter, so we please ask you to monitor, again, those speakers. And keep in mind, we did already have public comment on this as well, so we're even expending it further. Great, thank you. Please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jim Childs, Adams Dockweller Heritage. I'm here today in support of our sister organization's appeal, West Adams Heritage Association. And I just want you to know that without their intercession in this matter, the planning department would have allowed and did permit, through their SEQA clearance, the demolition of national register-eligible historic fabric and the alteration of another significant resource, which would have amounted to the complete degradation of the whole complex, and it would have lost its historic integrity. The SEQA clearances were wrong. The planning department has entrenched itself to defend its original position, and I would ask you to not be confused by their arguments. Thank you.
Great, no, thank you very much. Morning.
Hi, my name is Jean Frost. I'm vice president of West Adams Heritage. Thank you for allowing us to make comment. We represent 350 households who are in CD 1, 8, 9, and 10, for the most part. The implications of approving a categorical exemption in this issue has implications for future resources, and we believe the record is mistakenly based on half-truths. The level of resource has been misinterpreted. It is individually eligible, a 3S. The compliance with the standards has been misinterpreted. We have Mitzi March-Mogul and Peyton Hall saying this project doesn't meet the standards. Waha, by unanimous vote, engaged an attorney, Amy Minter, to draw your attention to the legal issues under SEQA, and we ask you not to approve a C on this matter. If the facts of the case are presented to you that are half-truths, you end up with bad conclusions. And I think the conclusion that is made cannot be supported by the record. We ask you to do the right thing. This is the last opportunity. Thank you very much.
Right, no, thank you very much. Rob, good morning.
Good morning. Council members, for the record, Rob Glushon. I represent the owner of this property. He's the evil guy who is creating student housing, jobs, opportunity for revenue. I got involved late in the process, and in Councilman Parks' staff's request, met with the appellant's, and virtually, I'd say, eight out of the 10 demands that they made to make changes in the project in the exterior were all made. This is a narrow appeal based on SEQA. I've actually been on the other side more than this side before. I think staff got it right. The city attorney has looked at this. I think they support the staff report. The categorical exemption is for a project that is nothing more than what's called a certificate of appropriateness. It has to do with the exterior of a building. The complaints that we're hearing now have to do with the interior of a building. The SEQA exemption is proper for the rehab of a potential historic resource. Thank you. We ask that you support the staff report.
Great, thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Laura Myers. I'm the appellant in this case on behalf of West Adams Heritage, and I have to say, I've been shocked for the last eight months, every time we meet. I'm shocked today, again, just to hear that this is a simple matter. It is not. This involves five buildings on seven parcels, one, two of which are being adaptively reused. We have no idea what the rest of the project is, and the reason we don't know is it's a categorical exemption at the point. I was shocked that the building was gutted without any building permits in January. I was shocked that the planning department did not care and went ahead and proceeded with the case. This was before they issued a determination. I was shocked that after a series of continuances for the Area Planning Commission, we learned at the hearing that all of the materials that we had submitted had been shredded and not transmitted to the Area Planning Commission. I was shocked to learn when this case went forward to the city council, that you also were not transmitted the entire case. In fact, it got lost for all the time until the day of the plum hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Herman, followed by Juan Nacala.
For the record, isn't it so unlawful to have half-truths? When we have a commission, public officials are taking actions on behalf of whom? You, the public? We, the public? Housing fraud? How does this go about when you have a population of homelessness in this large city of Los Angeles? And when does this fraud and people being injured? We heard a great point about quality of life, did we not? But yet, we fare away from the half-truths of how building and safety does not do its job. And this reflects on you, council members, because you are the lawmakers, and hopefully not lawbreakers. Because today, here's a gentleman who talks more so about housing. For who? For everyone, not just people in Los Angeles. Thank you. But for people here that are having the problem with housing.
He is not talking about this. This is not speaking on the matter. Thank you very much.
We are never on the issue when we call you crooks, of course.
That's not on the topic. All right, so if you could stick to the topic specifically. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the topic is, is that a lot of half-truths are always told when it comes to properties.
If you could just specifically talk about this item.
Specifically, the Adams properties were lied to, just like everybody else is lied to. And you shredded documents. You heard the lady. She's been telling you what's going on, and I'm just repeating it. You are driving people homeless, and you shouldn't be doing that. City Hall should not be about collecting money and driving everybody homeless. Until you get that through your head.
He is not talking about the SEQA.
You're not talking about the issue. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. That was the third warning. So with that, there's no speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 21 called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Okay, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Mitchell Farrell and his work on this. This is a
This is a bridge between the North Atwater Equestria area, across the great and grand Los Angeles River into Griffith Park, benefited greatly by a donation from Mort LaCretz, who's a good citizen of Los Angeles. He knows he can't take it all to heaven, so he's leaving some here, and he's created this intermodal bridge. I just wanted to shout out, thank engineering. And let's get this done, engineering, before Mort has to go anywhere. Thank you, except cross that bridge. Forthwith after the vote.
Thank you very much. So, by the way, all items today will be sent forthwith, per Mr. Labonge's request on this and all other matters in the expediency and efficiency of local government. So everything will be sent forthwith, without objection. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And where does that take us?
Item 22, called special by Councilmember Price.
We'll come back to that one and go to the next one.
Item 34, called special by Councilmember Huizar.
Okay, Mr. Huizar, item 34, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, this is an item that moves forward a project that we have that will serve the region, the streetcar project. And what we're doing today through this action is to approve construction method and oversight plan, to submit a letter to the Federal Transportation Authority to request project development, and to pursue a potential public-private partnership, which could very well find some, if not all, of our gap funding. Now, by approving today's plan, it would allow us to get more information on utility costs. There was an LA Times article that came out last week that said that this project is $200 million over budget, but in fact, that was the worst-case scenario. We have not completed our utility cost factors, which some of those utility costs may be absorbed by the Department of Water and Power, by the Public Works Divisions, and so until we get that utility cost, we will not really know how much that will actually cost. Now, I should say that we are over a bit, and like any major project that we do of this size, it will have some cost overruns. But our attempt to look at a public-private partnership, we hope we could fill that gap. Now, I want to thank our colleagues, my colleagues on council, for approving some Measure R funds that will provide funding for 30 years. I want to thank the voters of downtown Los Angeles, who decided to assess themselves on their private property to provide for about half to a third of the construction costs. As this moves forward, this is simply another step to say how we're going to manage this project as it moves forward. I want to thank LACI, the Los Angeles Streetcar, Inc., who has worked diligently to make this possible. LACI is composed of city personnel and of stakeholders in the downtown area that have moved this project forward. Now, Mr. President, if you will allow, we have a presentation by LACI board members that would provide a little more information on the financing of this great project. Now, before I turn it over to them, I do want to say, and I'm not sure if it's in their presentation, but if we think about the economic benefits of this project, we are leveraging a small investment to get huge returns. For example, the streetcar in downtown LA would bring more than $1 billion in economic activity to the city of Los Angeles. It would create more than 9,000 jobs, and it will continue to allow for a great transportation system. So the benefits are tremendous with this investment we make now. So with that, I'd like to ask Patrick Spillane, who is a LACI board member, to give a presentation. Steve Niedeman is here as a board member, as is Eric Metz, who is our staff member for LACI as well. If you could please come up and make your presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, guys, for coming up. I just wanted to make the technical motion to proceed. I sit on both of the committees that heard this matter. Mr. Krikorian's not here today. It was in his committee as well as mine. There's two different committee reports before us today, a Budget and Finance Committee report and a Transportation Committee report. The Transportation Committee report does everything the Budget and Finance Committee does, makes a technical correction that was requested by CD 14, and then just asks that this come back to committee again before the next step in the process. So I just want to formally suggest or move that we adopt the Transportation Committee report, which is item B.
Okay, I'll second that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Labonge.
I'd like to support Mr. Huizar. I look forward to the presentation. The only request I have is that you look at Bordeaux, France. They have a trolley system in its historic core that has a power grid on the tape underneath, so you don't have the wires. If you go down Broadway, it's so dramatic, and the work that you've done on Broadway, Mr. Huizar and others, all have made a difference. But to have the infrastructure, just look at that, to see if you could figure it out on Broadway. Are you going south on Broadway or north on Broadway?
Heading south.
So it's easier for the power, because you're going downhill, as opposed to coming north, let's say, up another street. So I just wanted to make that note, because it's exciting if this would be. Many cities have this, whether it's the new age, it's the right age, and I support it, but I absolutely am concerned about the architecture, and if there's a lot of wires, it does ruin the beauty. And if anybody has a chance right now, get on a tour bus, go down on the second level of Broadway, you'll see how fantastic it is, in a way. So let's hear the presentation, I believe.
Thank you, Councilman Labonge. Thank you, council members. I'm Patrick Spillane, IDS Real Estate Group, and a board member of LACI, here with Steve Niedeman and Eric Metz to answer any questions you may have. Today's actions before you, which have been highlighted by Councilman Huizar, who we think, is to approve the construction method and general manager oversight program for the construction methodology for the light rail system. We're also approving our small grants application to the FTA, which gets us into the beginning of that process, which is called project development. And we're also requesting that staff be enabled to pursue alternative project delivery options to potentially bring additional revenue into the project. For those council members that are new to the council, previous actions -- there we go. Previous actions were taken, where, of course, the approval of the CFD, which was passed by downtown residents with 73% of the vote, and a 30-year funding and operating plan by the council. Our streetcar is proposed as a modern system. It is not an antiquated, throwback novelty nostalgia. It is designed to connect downtown in the last mile of our significant urban transportation system with billions of dollars invested in light rail, heavy rail, and other mass transit options, getting workers and tourists and entertainment seekers into downtown Los Angeles. The route will be somewhat of a backwards B, I guess, heading south on Broadway, heading west on 11th, north on Figueroa, back through Restaurant Row on Historic 7th Street, which connects with the 7th Street Metro Station, and back uphill. We expect, through studies, that we will have about 6,000 riders a day, and it will connect all of the neighborhoods in downtown Los Angeles. And as the councilman pointed out, just in terms of other cities that have implemented streetcar systems, you've had billions in economic development in Portland, and you've had 55% of all development within Portland developed along their streetcar route. Washington's had 123% increase in property values and 2,000 new residential units. Our own studies of what will happen for downtown Los Angeles show significant annual increases in employment, revenues, and development. The actions today that you'll be approving really kick off our conceptual engineering process. As Councilman Huizar had said, we really are just getting going, and these are the studies and the engineering that's necessary to bring this process together. And as you can see from the conceptual engineering where we are today to our final construction documents, costs will become certain, and all things will get known. And then, just to let everybody know, the streetcar goes on top of the street. It is not a light rail system. It basically sits on an 18-inch concrete platform. Very efficient construction, very fast. It does not take the street out of service. And when you look at the potential conflicts, which the DWP report had mentioned, you can see where the streetcar alignment can be changed to avoid things like manhole covers, which they budgeted to be removed and replaced. And where we are with the FTA, by going into project development, we are in the very first step that goes all the way through congressional and presidential budgeting to our final small grant funding application for $75 million. And the Small Starts FTA program is not in competition with any other LA or metro project that we're aware of, and we think this would be an excellent candidate for our funding. And our milestones are to essentially get the streetcar EIR out early next year, complete our engineering, and to get construction going by late '15 for completion in '16 and '17. So we thank you for your consideration and appreciate your taking action on the three items before you today.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, and I want to thank the members of the Budget and Finance Committee and the Transportation Committee for your work on this. And this is a project that a lot of folks have put time and effort. So I want to thank the LACI board and all of you, both with your time and money into this. LACI is a nonprofit organization. A lot of the stakeholders in the area are putting their own financing, support, and time to make this happen, along with my office. This has come a long way. And as I hear of other streetcar projects throughout the country, LA is in a prime position to be at the top of the list for some of the FTA grants that are being put out, because we not only have a 30-year commitment for operations, but about a half to a third of our construction dollars. So this will allow us to move forward with a construction method and oversight plan, which is necessary, and to move this project forward. I want to, again, thank the committees, and as Mr. Bonin mentioned, we'll move forward the Transportation Committee report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue? We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Sadio, I believe you, we still have a presentation before us. Are you ready for your presentation, Mr. Sadio? All right, we'll go ahead and take you at the podium. Welcome. Mr. Sadio, it's all yours.
Welcome, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate Ovation Frontline Entertainment. For the next three days, if you are hungry, I know everyone is met with the challenge in Los Angeles of trying to choose which Mexican restaurant to go to. Is it La Golondrina in Borough Heights? Is it Frida's in Beverly Hills? Is it Rivera's in downtown? Or is it Badigan's right here in Echo Park?
Or Lucy's El Adobia.
Or Lucy's El Adobia, Melrose, or Guayaquilza, over in K-Town. So those are the challenges that we face as Angelinos. Where do we go eat? Well, that, for the next three days, is going to be solved, because we are going to have this incredible, extraordinary Mexican food fair called Beyond the Border of Taste, and it will be here September 18, 19, and 20 at the LA Convention Center. So you won't have to worry where to go. You can just go there every day, park, and enjoy all your meals for the next three days at the LA Convention Center, which will feature documentaries, lectures, workshops, tastings, photo galleries, and exhibition, and a conceptual showcase. I'm honored to have the best and finest of Mexican food here at our convention center. And today with us is Cesar Canavati, who has just flown in from Mexico City. He's just flown in from Mexico City to help lead this effort. The convention center is going to be the portal and the window to Mexican cuisine, and hopefully serves as a portal and window to our undeniable, unbreakable relationships with Mexico. Please, here with us to receive this recognition, please take a minute to hear from Cesar Canavati.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. And thank you, council members of the city of Los Angeles, for welcoming us to your fabulous city. It is an honor and a privilege for me to stand before you today on behalf of Ovation, the international event production company, to express our deepest gratitude to this council, and particularly to Councilmember Gil Sadio and Councilmember Tom Labonge, for the proclamation that you have awarded Mexico Food Fair. I wish to recognize publicly the decided support that the city of Los Angeles, starting with Major Eric Garcetti, and the council members of the 15 districts, have given to the establishment and strengthening of the bonds among the city and both governments and private sector organizations from all over the world. Thanks to that, Los Angeles is becoming the foremost globalopolis of the 21st century. Distinguished council members, we are very proud of Mexico Food Fair, an unprecedented event that will benefit the producers of Mexican foods, the buyers and distributors of such products in the state of California, but most importantly, the families of Los Angeles. Because the business relations that our event will establish will translate into more options and more competitive prices for the goods that each of them brings into the tables. We wish, to reiterate, you and your constituents are more cordial invitation to Mexico Food Fair, which, as Councilman Sadio said, will start tomorrow, September 18, and will run until next Friday, September 20, at the LA Convention Center. Not only will this be an opportunity to try out a wide variety of food products, but also to enjoy the music, traditions, and culture of the different regions of Mexico. Needless to say, Mexico Food Fair is absolutely free of charge and will be open to everyone. Again, I thank you, council members, for your attention and support, and sure hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Let's hear from Councilmember Tomas Labonge. Okay, very good. Hey, what is so great? We have this bond with Mexico, Mexico City, sister city. Mexico City, '68 Olympics, Los Angeles, '32 and '84, now the food fair. And what's better, when you can go to something that's free? This is great for the convention center, great for all Angelinos. Mr. Sadio, great job. I'll second your motions anytime. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Privilege.
Get in here, get in here. Betsy, right here.
Thank you very much. Hey, let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. They traveled a long way to get here to do this. Mr. Sadio, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And Mr. Labonge is our new city hall photographer. Smile for Mr. Labonge. All right. And if you haven't seen Tom's annual calendar, he is actually a fantastic photographer, an amazing photographer, a great person, a great leader in our city of Los Angeles, city of angels. Thank you, Tom Labonge. All right. With that, we're going to ask any members if they have any questions on the closed-session items, items 48, 49, 50. 48, 49, and 50. So items 48, 49, and 50. If there are any questions, we'll go ahead and hold those, and we'll go into a closed session, and we'll bring in the city staff and empty out council chambers. If not, we've already heard these in committee. The committee recommendations are going to be before us. Mr. Labonge, did you want to speak?
Based on the recommendation of the city attorney, I move these, go forward on consent.
Great, okay. So we'll go ahead and move these without objection by any of the members, 48, 49, and 50. Let's vote on each one of those individually, since they are legal issues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on 48. We'll have the city attorney first. We'll open the roll on 48. We'll have the city attorney state exactly what they are.
Yes, item 48. The Budget and Finance Committee recommended that legal counsel be given direction in how to proceed in this litigation, and thus the committee urged the city council's adoption of that recommendation.
Great, thank you very much. Item 48. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll on item 48. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
I just noticed my wife was all the way behind council chambers spying on me, so come on up here. All right. Item 49, if we can go ahead and read that into the record, too?
Item 49, in the case entitled David Gomez and Anna Gomez versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to pay a toll of $170,000 in settlement.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That'll be the action, and the following item, item 50.
Item fifty, in the case entitled William Ramsey et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, recommendation is to authorize the attorney to pay a toll of $220,096 in settlement.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And I believe that takes us to item fifty-one. And we'll go ahead and take item fifty-one. Mr. Fuentes, did you have any questions on item fifty-one, or did you just wish to vote a particular way? Or not? You're good on item fifty-one? Okay, for item fifty-one, I don't believe we have any speaker cards on fifty-one. We've already satisfied public comment. It was a continuation item. And we'll go ahead, Mr. Labonge.
I hit my knuckle, sorry.
Okay, no problem. It was a technical difficulty from having big football. Never mind. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item fifty-one. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. President, there is a request for that I am going to go urgent forthwith.
We'll go ahead and send that urgent forthwith without objection. Great, thank you so much. Will be the order. And with that, where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, for item twenty-two, called special by Councilmember Price, an amending motion has been circulated and is ready to be voted on by council.
Okay, great, thank you very much. The amending motion has been circulated. Do we have any speakers on the queue? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That'll be the action. Where does that take us?
Mr. President, there's requests to reconsider item ten and take that item up with item thirty-five.
Ten is an ordinance. We'll go ahead and take that up with thirty-five without objection. And I believe we have cards on thirty-five as well. Okay, Jay Handel. Followed by Donna Perlman. Okay, before you speak, we're going to go ahead, we already took one of those items. We're going to vote on a reconsideration, so we can, you could stay up there, Mr. Handel. Vote on reconsideration. So we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Jay, come on back up. You're up.
Okay, I need the exercise. Jay Handel speaking as an individual. INN sent this to the city attorney stating clearly that the DUN would be the lead agency in running the elections in conjunction with the city clerk. In reading the details, it kind of says that, but it's not, it's, you know, when I deal with the city, I don't like ambiguity. And I'd like it made very clear in the ordinance that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is actually running the elections in conjunction with DUN. We can't have two masters, and we can't afford to have any ambiguity in the ordinance. So I would ask you to read the paragraph that talks about DUN being the agency that specifies the who, what, and where of the election, but yet they're running it together. So again, what I'm asking for is clarity on behalf of the council to ask the city attorney to make it really, really clear who's in charge of the elections and who will be working with them, as opposed to showing it, again, as maybe just sharing the authority. And I just think that's a little dangerous, because ambiguity in any ordinance is very dangerous. Thank you.
Great, oh, thank you very much. Ms. Perlman.
Name's Pearman. Anyway, I like to be able to have the neighborhood elections be able to be run smoothly, as he said, only be brought on the, by the DUN and the neighborhood council. And I like to be able to have it so it's not so difficult, so be able, so people who are taking care of the elections know exactly what they're supposed to do. And lastly, I like to be able to have more, people who don't live exactly in the area to be able to have more ability to be able to get on the neighborhood council. Because sometimes people can be there forever but not actually live exactly in the neighborhood, and they're just like shutting the door, and anybody can help out how a lot on neighborhood councils. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those two items. And before we do that, our city attorney, do we need to read anything into the record on that? Oh, I'm sure, yes. Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, I'd like to request that we receive and file this item. Item number ten.
Request to receive and file item ten.
And just for clarification, item thirty-five has a resolution for council to adopt that's attached to the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, so which will be the action, and I believe that's how it's agendized as well. Thank you for the clarification. It's important for everybody else to understand what we're doing there. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And you can remove Mr. Bonin's name from the queue. It was, he was, no texting in legislating, Mr. Bonin. All right, I know. But somebody else wrote it and put it on a sticky, so I now have it permanently affixed here on a yellow sticky. Where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Item sixty, call special for cards.
Okay, item sixty, we're going to go ahead and send it to committee without objection, so those cards, those members of the public will have the opportunity to speak in committee on that. So without objection, that'll be the order on item sixty. Next item, please.
For the record, that item won't be referred to the Planning and Land Management Committee.
Planning and Land Management Committee, that's correct. Okay? Great. And next item, please.
That takes council to general public comment.
Okay, general public comment cards. We have Sean, followed by John Walsh, Donna, in that order. Come on up.
Yeah. Yeah, good morning, Mr. President. We need public safety to fix our sidewalks. I see sidewalks that are cracked for years. No, nobody's been fixing them. We need to have our sidewalks fixed. That's it. Van Nuys video conference.
Great, thank you very much. Donna, come on up.
Hope I can do it fast. Okay, I'd like to, first of all, thanks, Englander, for bringing up the texting and crossing the streets. I very much agree with that. Anyway, thank you, Norrie Martinez, Joe Busciano, Bernie Parks, Fuentes, Bloemenfeld, Mike Bonin for supporting the Van Nuys video conferencing. Now is the time to open the video conference in Van Nuys and San Pedro. There's many issues pertaining to safety of Los Angeles that needs to be addressed, but the speakers being closed down, we're losing vital information. It's very difficult for disabled to come from the valley to here. Marion would not be able to, would have to start being able to getting up before seven, take two-hour bus ride, sit on hard seats, no chance for restrooms, because you might be cold, up to three hours ride back home, get home at four to five p.m., if you're lucky, for two to seven minutes speaking. The disabled have many needs, medications, certain foods that they need to have, treatments, sessions maybe, using restrooms at regular intervals, ability to be able to rest, along with all along of their needs, none of it available at City Hall. The buses and rail are not handicap accessible. I've seen wheelchairs passed up, spots used up, or it's broken. One-man commuter bus and a wheelchair was out for, stuck for an hour. Restrooms are not available during the trip. You can't eat and drink on the bus. And our sidewalks have many cracks, making harm for the disabled, elderly people with brittle bone problems like myself. I shoveled along Ventura Boulevard, because I had trouble walking that day, and fell hard. Our streets are not up to code. We need, we don't need this huge Hollywood project. We need easy access to City Hall. Our mayor will back you up. This is the time, we need to have Van Nuys video conferencing. It's against the disabled people who have a hard time getting, almost impossible to get here. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. John, welcome.
Thank you, John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands.org, 100,000 server requests a month. Okay, this is the issue. You saw the anti-Semitic, my great-grandfather's name was Leo Berger. He was born in Hungary. He believed that there were, he is a conspiracy theorist. He thought everybody in Hungary that was Jewish would be killed. He left the country. Six million other Jews thought he was a nut, but he wasn't a nut. He came here, and his daughter married a Christian. Okay, and that's how you got John Walsh, instead of another Holocaust victim. Okay, we are demanding all these remembrances. This is the first time anyone has demanded a Holocaust survivor remembrance. And we want a plaque. Now, the German government killed six million. The city of Los Angeles killed one Holocaust survivor, Leon Preport.
Thank you.
And they haven't apologized yet. You haven't even, this happened in 2012 years ago. You haven't even shown up and ended a meeting in his, now, on my great-grandfather's grave in Coney Island, I am going to get, and we are going to get, every Jew in the world. I say to every Jew in the world, or every Jew lover in the world, we want a memorial for Holocaust survivors. Most of them are dead now. And the only one who was killed was on the huge, on our little train, the shortest train in the world. He was torn apart. He bled to death, and his wife, this is, they call it the Flight of Angels. It should be the Flight of Demons. HollywoodHighlands.org, and I don't think you give a damn.
Great, thank you very much, John. Richard. We're not going to ask for applause during public comment at all, and so, or booing, or anything else. We want to make sure the speakers have their same rules of decorum as all of us. Thanks, John. Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson, GOP, grand old party, the party of Abraham Lincoln. Sir, President Obama, while stumping the hustings in 2007, was asked by an investigative reporter who his favorite president is. He said, not Abraham Lincoln, he didn't say John Fitzgerald Kennedy, he said former President Ronald Reagan. Former President Ronald Reagan is our president's favorite president. President Obama is a Reagan Democrat. Also, another little-known fact, President Obama's grandfather on his mother's side was a Second World War hero. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sheila Burke. Sheila, followed by...
Yeah.
Bob Cooper.
Yeah, I wanted to make a public comment about the fact that you claim that you're doing all these things to help people try and save their house in California, and on the other hand, you're going ahead and trying to put liens against them, which is totally contradictory with each other. You've got families that are struggling just to pay the mortgage, and just to keep their homes for their family, for their kids, feed their kids, and then, even though you're helping them on one level, you're trying to take them away on the other hand with a lien. And none of this makes any sense. You also went ahead about six years ago and gave out trees to the community to grow. The whole LA County had a tree give out. Then when we grow the trees that you gave us, then you want us to cut them down and pay us to get rid of them. None of this is making any sense, and the whole thing seems very contradictory. And I would like to wonder why you would give things out and then want us to cut them down, and then pay us, and then try and take it away, get us to pay you back. You either pay us, or you, it doesn't make any sense. You have to decide whether you want the homeowners to stay in their homes, or you want everybody to be homeless and on the streets. And then you fine them for being on the streets. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Bob Cooper? Is Bob Cooper not here? Okay. Juan? And Herman is our last card after Juan.
The camera guy, I have noticed in the internet that you always put me as far away as you can, and whenever I move there, you move the camera here, whenever I move there, et cetera. You're playing a stupid game that you're not going to win. I will be hurt no matter what. Nobody in this world should be homeless, and that's all I'm saying. And if I use irreverent language, it's because you all deserve it. And now, thanks to Zuma Dog, I can do this. You see?
You do have to speak on matters about the city, though, and so it's...
I am. It's public comment.
That's right. It's not just about anything you specifically want in the world. It's still things that are under our purview. That's not.
...everybody homeless, the way you do.
Yes.
This poor lady is begging you not to penalize her for everything. You see? You see how old she is? And you, Englander, you go to Venice Beach and take...
If you can keep it specific, not to any specific members, but general public comment. Okay, thank you.
You know the picture of a homeless dude? Everybody goes to Venice to take pictures of homeless people, and you want to keep shoving homeless people back and forth? You want Mexican restaurants to make homeless people fat? Is that what you want? You want a stupid society where we should start by giving everybody a home and then work from there? You should not do every attempt to drive everybody homeless. We do not need parking meters either. Nobody voted for them. Are we in a democracy, or are we in a dictatorship? We are in a stupid, stupid dictatorship.
Great, thank you very much. You're up. Herman?
State Attorney Kamal Harris, why are we not using useful laws to protect individuals with disability? The city of Los Angeles is under attack, Mr. Jose Weezer. Has to identify the potential problematic inconsistencies of your violations under ADA. You can't put a blue line, or a green line, or pink line. Get it straight. ADA has rules, and you must abide by state and federal mandates. Furthermore, it is important to do so at a time of insufficient recommendation. Why? Because more proactive activity is needed when it comes to the rights of people with disabilities. Why so, Mr. Labonge? Because here in this manual says, the American Disability Act Title III now, Technical Assistant Manual. So far, many of you have been counterproductive. The safety of our streets, the safety of your pedestrians, the situation of your constituents being thrown out on the streets by bogus liens that Zuma Dog, David Salzberg, brought to your attention in the last 10 years he's been here, saying, "Look how foolish you are." And it is foolish to put innocent people, families, in the streets for whatever reason, and more so the population of people on Seventh and Olive, homelessness, homelessness here down on Broadway. Why do you continue to kick them off the streets and remove their property? You're in violation of their rights under the Constitution. You know that, and it's a fact. While Ms. Martinez and Mr. Sadio are listening very intently to this point, we must stop homelessness in this city of Los Angeles. It is a big deal. State and federal funds should be solely for the purpose of ADA, Section 504. What is a program activity, Mr. Labonge? What is a periodic review? These matters have...
Great, thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, appreciate it. So you've got to step away, please. Thank you very much from the podium. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes general public comment. I believe that we have no more items before us.
Yes, Mr. President, but just for correction for item sixty, that item won't be referred to the Planning and Land Management Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, it'll be duly referred. Okay, that correction will be noted without objection. With that, I believe...
Council has motions for posting and referral.
We do have motions for posting referral.
The desk is clear.
Consider those posted and referred. Members, any announcements, members? Do we have any announcements? Do we have any announcements? We will be on council recess tomorrow and Friday for the California League of Cities. I will make that announcement with seeing no other announcements. Any adjourning motions? Having no adjourning motions? We do have a couple. Mr. O'Farrell, if everybody can please rise in council chambers for adjourning motions, if we can get everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. All members of the public, please rise. Mr. O'Farrell.
Colleagues, it is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Gloria J. Sohaki. Gloria was a resident of Echo Park and a devoted community leader. She loved her work and served as a dedicated employee of Central City Action Committee and Tex Restaurant. She also served as a passionate volunteer to the Rampart Police Department. Gloria was a loving mother of Nancy Morgan, Kristen, and Sean Sohaki, sister of the Foreman and daughter of the late Paul Foreman, Anjun Buerre. Her son, Sean Sohaki, goes on to say this, excuse me, "For those of you who knew my mother, she was a friend, she was a leader, she was a cousin, she was a sister. Best of all, she was my mother. I miss her so much. I hope her memory will live on with everyone she has touched forever. And for anyone who's ever been to Tex Restaurant or needed help from Central City Action Committee, Gloria was always a welcoming presence at both locations, and her memory will certainly live on in the Echo Park community and Silver Lake community, because she was with both organizations for decades." Gloria J. Sohaki passed away at the age of 66 on Thursday, September 5, 2013.
Great, thank you. Any other members? Okay, we'd also collectively like to adjourn this meeting in honor of the victims in the Navy Yard shooting in Washington, D.C., and all the families, the wounded, the military personnel who have been affected by this, and the first responders as well, as our nation is in mourning. With that, be safe. Thank you, we are adjourned.